Go over the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to mindest reflect that we held an executive session prior to the meeting tonight for personnel issues. Any comments on agenda items? Any comments on agenda items?
Question.
You can come up to the mark and give us your name, please.
Hi, Teresa Pasolka. I just noticed that April 1st and 5th are listed as virtual days now. I was just wondering why.
On the calendar?
Mm-hmm.
We'll get to that when we do the discussion of it.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, a roll once or in your packet. Item five, approval of minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
And motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Yes. Superintendent's report.
I'm making a motion that, or I'm looking for a motion to approve items one through four on the regular superintendent's report in the regular agenda.
I, I'll see your motion for that, or your request for that, but I'll raise you a motion for items one, three, and four because I have to abstain from two.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't know that.
That's all right. So a motion to approve superintendent's items one, three, and four in the regular agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve number two on the superintendent's report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on number two. Any discussion?
Is that what you said you wanted to say?
You have a question?
No.
No.
Oh, yeah, we had a second. I'm sorry.
Oh, did you? I thought he said he was asking for a second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Abstain.
Mr. Cabala?
Yes. Okay.
So there is item one on the supplemental agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Probably no discussion in this, so roll call, please.
Dr. Cabala?
No.
Mr. Swilly?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
Mrs. Bennett?
No.
Mrs. Gregory?
No.
Mrs. Arnold?
No.
Mr. Far?
No. Okay. Commandee reports.
The extra curriculums are right here. So the extra curriculums, if we want, we spoke about following the same guidelines that they have in place within the new, I guess, guidelines that the governor, the Department of Health, put into place. We talked about the mask policy. We're going to continue with the mask policy for the athletes while they're in competition. They may move the mask, otherwise they have to have the school to put a mask on. We're still doing all the same things that we did in the fall season and the winter season with the coaches, the temperature, the questionnaires. We're following all of our same guidelines. One of the discussions came up, if the government allows the boost up, I believe, concessions was a question that we brought up and Heather, we looked at the regulations and that's up to the school. So I agree with Shane, we spoke about allowing the outdoor concessions as long as that representative from that, let's say the baseball parents organization comes in and gets the training that some of the other volunteers or the coaches got, saying the way to clean and we as a district set out. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
I think, and Mr. Bosch, was there anything else? I don't believe we're following the same rules and we're going to just keep rolling with hopefully now the next few weeks to a couple of months, the governor is going to, the Department of Health and the Department of Education will loosen some of the rules and regulations, but we're following the same thing that we've been following.
Yeah, they have, the governor lifted, you know, increased the capacity limits and some of those minor changes, but all that is, we're well within that. Yeah. The coaches, our spring coaches have completely embraced everything that we've asked them to do, so we're off to a real exciting start, but the weather, the way it's been, the season's off and running, literally, you know, it's really fun to see.
And the only indoor sport is boys volleyball, correct? All the other sports are outdoors, so that, that kind of loosens some of the, some of the burden on the athletes, coaches, and the community, so that's, that's good.
Bill, just to clarify, the concessions regarded is just pertaining to outside groups, not school sports?
No.
School sports as well?
Let's, let's say it's, I'll pick on Coach Custer, the baseball program. They want it during their age, they want an outdoor concession stand. Always what they've done is, let's say they get boxes of pizza, they'll sell pizza, they have the salad patch and the, you know, whatever, cookies and things like that, and I think they have it grilled down there as a matter of fact.
They have in the past.
So what, we, at least we spoke about it, we felt that that was in line with, it's an outdoor activity, but those adults have to get trained
Okay.
in how to make sure they clean the, because that's the big thing with our rules, if I'm not mistaken, Shane.
Yeah, right. We just want to make sure that whoever is utilizing any sort of district facilities for concessions or inform the building that they use for concessions, that they're following the cleaning protocols, that they're pushing again. So, you know, it's similar to how we approach, you know, say a sporting event with the coaches and maybe there's much of a sense, we want to approach it just to ensure that they have the training or the protocol.
So we're not allowing any indoor concessions.
But if the, wow, that's really loud. If the volleyball team wanted to set up a table in the breezeway outside to sell concessions, that isn't something that, I want to be clear, I'm not volunteering to do that, but if that was something that they wanted to do, that's something we would entertain.
Yeah, we can, we can muscle something to the difference. In a large area, we spoke about that, we don't want the, I think it's really what we're talking about, the hot food and people getting all
Right.
running in there on the indoor activity, at least right now, following the governor's rules, that's, that's what we recommend from the extra curriculum.
Now, because volleyball's the only indoor sport right now, it did increase a whole whopping 5%, so we're acknowledging the 5% and
Yes.
so is it fair to say that if, if he were to jump it to 25%,
Yes.
we can just say we're going to do that? We don't have to wait till we have a meeting and, and go through everything a couple of weeks later?
That's what we're talking about. As the governor lifts the sanctions and the rules, we're just going to, we're going to continue to flow with whatever the expectation is of that percentage.
I know how rowdy those volleyball crowds can get, so you know, I'm just making sure.
And I think that Mr. Bosch and the cabinet have been doing a great job because you have to report to the PIAA how many players you have, coaches, staff, and then, then you allow so many parents that are left over. Right. Yes. They've been giving up the tickets. I know what we tried to do is we gave, I guess, preference to the senior parents, if I'm not mistaken, and then went down. So I think we'll follow that same guideline.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to new business.
So the snow days that we took off, I was incorrect in my interpretation of the waiver that we had received from PDE. So we had three snow days this year. We, although we are waived from the 990 hours, we are still expected to log 180 days. So the, what it allowed us to do is to do some virtual days. So although we had lost the days that were originally in the calendar around Easter, we took those out when we revised the calendar in the fall. So the other, the only three days left are the Thursday before Easter, the Monday after Easter, and then the third makeup day would be June 11th, which is a Friday, okay? And then we could, we could do graduation then, or we could do it whenever, you know, whatever the board decided. So because I don't want to interfere with families' plans to go away for Easter or to finally be able to see people that they have been missing for a year, I am making the recommendation that on those dates, that we do a virtual day. So we do it Thursday, the first, and April 5th, which is the following Monday, that the kids are virtual, and, and then June 11th would be the third day. So that would take us, just, we would round out that week. We were originally designed to end on the 10th. We would end on the 11th. And that Friday is virtual, as of right now, so.
June 11th would be virtual?
June 11th, as of right now, unless something changes.
Because we have virtual Fridays.
Right now is virtual. It's a virtual Friday.
All of our Fridays are virtual.
Yeah, okay. As of right now.
Sure.
So, so that's my recommendation. That seemed the cleanest way for, for us to do it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
You have a choice. You have to extend it at the end of the year.
Yeah.
If you want to off.
Yeah. We have to go into the next week. Yes.
14 to 50.
Yes.
The one thing that's on here, and I'll question, seniors graduating, and it's on the schedule, so I want to talk about them, if they have enough hours.
Yeah, we just have to go back and.
You can consider a different day, maybe the week before, if that's possible.
Yeah. I just, I didn't figure that out, Bill. I wasn't ready for that.
If they had the hours, I think it's something that we should consider.
Okay.
As the senior, if we can get them out of the building, so that it'd be.
Okay. So we won't set graduation at this point and we'll just, until I get that information?
Do you need a motion for that?
I'm sorry.
Do you need a motion for the change?
You need a motion to approve the calendar, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, you know, I'm obviously not a huge proponent of more virtual days, however, I agree with Heather's idea that, you know, this might be a big time to travel. And when we called those snow days, there was zero expectation that we would have to make them up at all. So this is in addition to what we thought was going to be happening this school year. And it's to be determined, but at this time, it's, it doesn't look like it's going to be synchronous to where the kids would have to log it. That hasn't officially been determined, but that's the expectation. They have to log their attendance.
That's right. Let's do it live, the families want it.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item two, grievance on course, program, program course approval from TAEA. Can you tell us what course this was?
This is based on my denial of a master's program for things that we are not teaching anymore and that no one is assigned to teach in that particular field, and so I deny.
Okay. Your motion?
A motion to deny the grievance?
To deny or to approve?
Sure. Motion to, I'll give a motion to deny the grievance.
We have a second.
A second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
You have to hold on there?
Yes.
Okay. So just to clarify, we don't, what, the program, the master's program that's being sought, we don't actually have that program at Toncanic anymore, and the person in question is teaching an entirely different subject.
Correct.
Okay.
And you're voted off to deny the motion.
To deny the grievance. There had been a decision by administration already to not approve the, the courses, and that was creeped, so now we have to.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. White? Can I ask what course it is? Why, what, what, what course is it?
Well, it's not being taught.
What is, what aren't we teaching anymore that's getting creeped?
The reason we're hesitating is because I feel like it would, it would
More than personnel.
It would give, it would give away who the person is, which would then be
Personnel issue.
A breach of their.
We'd be preaching personnel confidentiality.
The only reason I question this is, and, is because every board meeting that I've been at, it seems that you guys have a personnel meeting beforehand, come out, and you read down the agenda, and it's yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. There's no public discussion really on anything. And it's not really discussed among people. I mean, granted, there's not much, many people here, but that just seems how every board meeting that I've been this past year goes about. That's all.
There are certain subjects that we can't discuss in public, such as personnel items.
I know, but it's everything on the agenda, it seems. It's not just personnel items. It'll be everything on the agenda. Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion and a second?
Yeah.
So we vote no and denial, which is something.
We know we vote yes to deny.
So you want to vote yes if you want to deny it?
Yes.
[laughing]
Well, that's right, guys, it's a double benefit.
Gotcha.
If we vote yes, we're denying it.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Yes, vote is denial, correct?
Yes, vote is denies.
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Swilly?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold? Yes.
Yes. Okay, looking for a resolution to approve the reserve intermediate units policies and procedures under the federal requirements of 34 CFR, part 300.
Motion approved.
Second?
Do we do this as a hearing?
Yeah, this is pretty much, this is a big reading by the board. It has to be done. Yeah, because we have so many districts involved, you have to approve the reading because we followed the outline.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. White? Yes.
Mrs. Arnold? Yes.
Yes. Item four, looking for a resolution to approve bus van contracts.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Discussion?
Abstain.
Discussion? Just a reminder that this is pretty much just a change in ridership, and it's pretty much minor changes.
Thank you, Bill.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Cabala?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Hi, Teresa Pasolka again. I kind of want to touch on what this gentleman was getting at. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you board members. I know all of you volunteered to run and were elected to your positions, and I'm not really sure why. It certainly wasn't for the money or the prestige. It takes a lot of time and effort, and it's time and effort away from your own families, so I want you to know that that's recognized and appreciated. It's not a job I would particularly want. I remember several years ago when we had different board members and a different superintendent, and this district was in a much different situation that was not good, and I think we have come and progressed from that in a good way. You know, especially when we go to COVID, there's been a lot more transparency and information. Heather has gotten up here and given presentation week after week, breaking down the numbers and the complex formulas and everything that you're doing, and I do appreciate that, and I like that it's being explained fully to us. But what I didn't like was what I saw at the last meeting when it came to the two and a half percent raise for the teacher's contract extension. I just read it in the agenda now, so I'm sorry if you explained it at a prior meeting, but up until a few minutes ago, I didn't even understand yet what you had approved. I didn't understand that the teacher's contract expired at the end of this year, and so this extends it for one year with a two and a half percent raise. That being said, I wanted to, my point tonight is to clarify what the role is of board members in this comment section, in case anyone has kind of lost focus on that. You are representatives for us, for your particular section of the district. And as that, that doesn't mean you make decisions for us. It means you are a conduit between us and the school system. So when you get up there and go, it's not what Holly Arnold thinks is best. It's what the people in Holly Arnold's section of the district want. And, you know, last meeting, when you came in here, and like I said, I knew next to nothing, and I know a lot of other parents were very unfamiliar with what you were proposing and voting on. It seemed like your minds were made up. And I'm not saying you made the wrong decision or the right decision, but I would bet a lot of money, very few of you talked to other people and families and taxpayers about what was being proposed before you made your decision. Maybe I'm wrong, and I apologize if I am. But what I don't understand is if we can send out a survey asking if you want your kids back in school four days a week, if we can send out all calls reminding me about the produce pickup and activities, why can't we send out a survey to parents saying, this is the proposal before the board, and explain what it is, and say, if we don't approve it, this is what happens, and if we do approve, and if we, I'm sorry, confused, but if we do say yes, this is what happens. If we don't, this is what happens. And then you get a response. So that way, it's very clear to people who may not attend these meetings or watch the videos or follow the articles in the paper, what's being proposed, and you get a direct answer from them. So even if they say, yeah, the teachers are going to strike, but we don't want to give them the pay raise, it's not on you. You're voting for them, and then it goes from there. I just want to make sure that the transparency and the flow of communication and information stays that way. Like, I don't want it to feel like we're coming here and we're not just supposed to, this isn't just so, you know, you sit there, we talk, and then we walk away, and then that's it. There is supposed to be some kind of interaction and back and forth. I know you don't want to get into arguments and discussions with parents up here, but we're meant to question, and we need to know your reasons. We need explanations if you want us to support the decisions that are being made. On a separate note, when it comes back to students going back four days a week and the Chromebooks, I don't know what the plan is with the teachers. You know, I know my kids have to take their Chromebooks in and home and to school and home every day. Honestly, I would not be sad at all if I saw less of that Chromebook. When they go back four days a week, I would love for my son to take that to school on Monday, and I don't want to see it again till Thursday afternoon when they come home and have to do work on Friday. They have a teacher in front of them. I don't know if the Chromebooks are being open in the classroom. I really hope they're not. And if they're not, great, leave them there. They have books and notebooks, and everyone was getting taught before this without a Chromebook. I would like to see us go back to that more because I don't like my child staring at a screen all day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to, first of all, I just want to say Teresa's always very polite and has been involved all along, so I'm, I'm going to try and answer back for some of the stuff that she was saying, but it's in no way like a, I'm going to shoot back at you. So we, the teacher's contract, so 90% of the teacher negotiations end up happening by that committee behind closed doors because that's one of the sunshine negotiation opportunities. So then that committee makes a recommendation to the board, which that's how it would end up on a, an agenda to begin with. In this particular situation, the committee had made that arrangement, or not arrangement, but like the negotiation or had come to that agreement, I guess is the word I'm looking for, with the union after the union, after the agenda had been printed. So it was initially put on a supplemental agenda, and he's not here tonight, but John Burke was the first one that said, you know, I'm really not comfortable with that because then it wasn't even in the paper, and it is, even though it is a one-for-one extension of the contract they already had, there's no like increase to what they already had as far as what they were gaining each year, the opportunity for people to know. So at that meeting, I think there was something said about, here's why we're pulling that off the table for tonight because the community hasn't had a chance to see it, ask questions, and understand it. But then it was on the next agenda, and that's where it came in, and there, there probably was, it might seem like there was no discussion, but I think it's because most of the board members were, this is what we had done with the other contract. This has been pretty standard. Negotiating a contract at this particular point in time wouldn't necessarily be a good use of anybody's resources. I can definitely appreciate that there would be people that had an objection, whether it's because they didn't fully understand or just they did fully understand and still didn't think that it was the right thing to do. But there was an attempt to make that, you know, more transparent. When I ran for the board, when I was sitting in the seats that you guys are, that my biggest issue was the lack of transparency. And that, that was what prompted having a Facebook page before I was on the board about the school district and, you know, like you had said, there was a different board, there were different administrators, it was a different time. I, I'd like to think that we've come a long way, like you said, and there's probably room to be better, but that's probably why I also tend to like say more than is probably necessary at some of the meetings because I do want there to be an understanding of why we're looking at something the way that we are. I, I can't speak for any of the other board members, but that, I think we can make a more concerted effort to vocalize our individual opinions, but if, if we vote together, it's because given all the data that we have, we all kind of came to the same conclusion. We don't like get together and talk about our votes in advance. And I appreciate that. I want to just point out that you have all of that data and not necessarily are explaining all of that data to us, and because you have more, like you're on the board, you have knowledge of the inner workings of the school system and, and the Board of Education stuff, and we don't. we don't. So, what may seem like a very logical decision to you, because you know all these reasons, seems maybe evasive or, you know, seems like we're not getting any explanation, like, we just made a decision. So, I do appreciate the transparency, and I would rather you overexplain stuff to us because the vast majority of us don't know the inner workings, and that's what we need to keep learning about, because I don't doubt you have a reason for doing it, I just want to make sure I know what it is. Thank you.
So, I'm Jen Brody, I have an eighth and ninth grader. So, I heard again, you know, the discussion with you guys in adding three more virtual days. So, I'm now seeing, you know, this school's back to, going back five days, this school's going back five days, this school's going back five days, you know, congratulations to all of those schools. We're going back four days. Now, we have three more virtual days. I just ask that you please really consider not doing that any longer. Like, I want my kids to be in school and learn. When they're at home, it is extremely diminished, and they've already lost so much that I ask that you take it a little more seriously, instead of just saying, well, you know, and I appreciate, I want to be able to travel with my, my kids around the holiday, too, but my concern is, is that it's three more days, that they're not going to get any sort of, like, real instruction. So, I just ask that we stop doing that, because they've already missed so much, and it's so easy to just say, oh, yep, it's easier, we'll just do a virtual day. That really means the kids aren't going to do anything, teachers aren't going to sign anything on those days, because they know that kids are going to be, you know, traveling to go with their family or home for the holiday or something like that. So, while I think it's, you know, seems like the right thing to do, because it's nice, I want my kids to get an education, and I just can't believe, like, how much they've